Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, February 22nd at 7:05 PM. And tonight, we're having two committee meetings followed by a special session where we will have some readings of ordinances. And our first meeting, first committee meeting tonight is with transportation. And returning to Councilmember Pappy as chair.
Thank you, President Nisley. Our first agenda item is a report. We have the last few years had yearly reports from our Athens Transit staff. And so, Michael Lockman is here and he'll speak to us from the podium. Everyone on council should have a written document that updates the HAPCAP transportation updates. So, he's not going to go through that entirely, but certainly if you have questions, I'm sure Michael will field them. Thank you, Michael.
Well, thank you, Michelle. It's great to be here tonight. Thank you for taking time out of what I know is a really busy agenda this evening. So, I appreciate being here. I am the lone representative from the HAPCAP transportation programs this evening. We're going to be a dual team of Lance Rep and I, but Lance is ill tonight, so he couldn't be here. He sent us for breaths. So, I'll be presenting on behalf of all of our transportation programs. For those of you that are new to council, we have some fresh faces, so it's good to be in front of you for the first time. So, I'm Michael Lockman. I'm the coordinator for the Athens Public Transit Program. And to start off, a word of how the relationship with the city at HAPCAP works. HAPCAP is the designated grantee administering transportation programs on behalf of the city of Athens. The two programs that are administered in that way are Athens Public Transit and Athens Go Bus, which is now a statewide program. And there's also Athens On Demand Transit, which I was just about to mention, which is funded majority by the State DD Council of Ohio with also some local funding involved. And we have Logan Public Transit, which is up in Logan, Ohio. HAPCAP has a similar relationship there with the Logan City Government. And finally, we have the Mobility Management Program, which coordinates transportation services throughout the county. And that's what Lance is in charge of. So, to give you a couple of highlights from 2015, as Michelle said, I'm not going to go through everything on this sheet, but I wanted to pull out a couple of things that I think are pretty exciting. I'll start with Athens Public Transit. That's my world. So, a couple of things that have happened later in the year that I've really been happy to see. We have been talking for a while about coordinating our realtime systems with Ohio University. We were both on the Double Map bus tracking system, which is publicly available. And we got that done in the fourth quarter of 2015. It's now fully live. You can still go to the old URLs, but they'll bounce you to this new URL, aptcats@doublemap.com. And that'll show not only all of our buses, but all of the CAT shuttle system and the CAT cab of Paratransit Service, all in the same map, so you can see how all of these different lines connect to each other. Another thing that happened this fall, in October, we unveiled a bus that we've been working almost a year on. This was a poetry bus. We took the work of a local poet, Wendy McVicker. We wrapped the bus in this poem, and it extended both outside the bus and inside the bus. So, it's, the stanzas are also on the windows inside and the floor. And we had a kickoff event, and the bus has now been rolling around the streets of Athens and will continue to do so, I think, till the end of this calendar year. In November 2015, we made a change to our fare instruments. We added a day pass. This was something that a number of our patrons had requested. So, for $3 now, you can purchase this pass on the bus. It's good for the rest of the day. It's good for unlimited rides for that day. We've had fairly modest sales of them so far, but it's still a fairly new fare instrument, so we expect it to grow over time. And as you have contacts that you run into that might be interested in that, please do spread the word. Moving on to Go Bus, so in November, we started a toll-free line in-house. Previously, this had been a third-party service contractor responsibility, but we now have two service contractors because we're statewide, Lakefront Lines and Barron's Bus. So, it made sense to bring that 800 line in-house. That has been very successful. We now have two, one full-time, one part-time staff member on the line, and we've gotten very positive feedback about how they're performing in terms of customer service. And another thing that I wanted to point out that happened recently is that there was a lot of hard work done to get an upgrade to the pavement around the Go Bus stop at the community center. That project's now complete. It's working really well, so we're happy to have concluded that. Athens On Demand Transit, they had a successful review completed by ODOT for the Ohio Council for Developmental Disabilities. And again, the Developmental Disabilities Council is the major funder right now for Athens On Demand, and we're looking to see if they're going to continue to support things in a sustainable way. It's been five years of funding. I think we're fairly optimistic in the sense that it's really been demonstrated clearly that this is a much-needed service and one that people rely on. So, further updates on that for sure. And Athens On Demand ridership for the 2015 year was just a shade below 9,000 rides, which considering that we have essentially two transit systems operating in the same general territory, that's really quite amazing. There are systems certainly that are just by themselves that are smaller than Athens On Demand now in Ohio. One other thing that I would like to point out on here, going back to the relationship between HAPCAP and the city of Athens, this is a designated grantee redesignation year coming up. And that means that we will be coming to you all and to the city executive branch to discuss that at some point in 2016. So, look forward to that. A couple of other things to look forward to. Many of you remember that we did a lot of work in 2015 with getting new vehicles and specifically low-floor vehicles for Athens Public Transit. It's been a long road to get those vehicles delivered. We've had some delivery delays, but I'm happy to report at this point, we're just around the corner from getting them delivered. I had an email today that they are on their way from the factory in Michigan to the dealership in Cincinnati and about to be inspected and delivered to us. So, that'll be a much-needed shot in the arm in terms of our vehicle operations.
Two or one?
Two. And then, not only that, we now have a purchase order in for a third vehicle in 2016, and that will be coming late summer. And the other good news about that is that for this year, it's 100% federally funded. Normally, we have an 80/20 match or more. It was more last year for the two vehicles, and the match was bumped up. But this year, things have swung in the other direction, so it's a good financial thing. Ken?
Thank you, Michael. Were the two buses, these are the ones that have the lower entry points, is that correct?
Exactly. So, they have what we consider to be enhanced accessibility. There are no steps into the bus other than the step from the curb to the floor level.
Okay, thank you.
Another project that I think will probably be ongoing for most of the year, we took delivery of six bus shelters and nine freestanding benches in 2015. And for 2016, we'd like to get those installed around the city. And we also now have just shy of $9,000 from, or just shy of $8,000, I'm sorry, from the Athens Foundation to enhance that project with better ADA access at stops and potentially also some public art and stormwater improvements and landscaping. So, that's an exciting thing that's on the horizon.
People may not understand why stormwater's important, but if anybody who rides the bus knows that oftentimes it's on, in bad weather conditions, be it water or snow, that stormwater builds up sometimes at some of these stops. And then, it's difficult to access the bus as it pulls up.
Yeah, there really are a host of environmental factors that can affect a bus traveler's commute, and I think that stormwater's definitely one of them.
Go ahead, Mayor.
A related question that I have, something that everyone's been dealing with all summer, or all winter. Thank goodness it's not summer. Is snow removal, is there a snow removal plan surrounding the bus stops, especially if we're seeing more sheltered bus stops as well as benches showing up throughout the city?
At this point, we don't have a snow removal plan. And I think that that's something that we need to take a pretty hard look at in the future. It's not something that is typically taken on by transit agencies. We've consulted with larger agencies, and they mostly say that they defer to their city government or to laws involving private owner snow removal. But I remain unconvinced that that's necessarily the best way to go. We may need at some point to take a more active stance on it. One other thing that I'd like to point out on here under the other news general, last year, we participated in a senior safety day, first effort, and also a disabilities awareness event. Both of those events are happening once again this spring, and I think that they're great events. The turnout was really solid last year for both of them, and I'm hoping that that's something that the word can really get out about and we continue to reach people through those.
Make sure that you get us an announcement soon enough so we can get it on our website and discuss it here for announcements at council, and we'll make sure we do that.
One other thing that I noticed there's been some comments and questions on regarding Go Bus is we have a new wrap design, and when is it going to be in place? And I was told today that the ETA right now is mid-March to start having wrap buses out on the road. There has been, kind of like our vehicle situation, they're leasing vehicles, but there have been some new ones that have been incoming for a while now. So, they've not wanted to spend the money wrapping vehicles that they know will be off the road fairly soon. But my understanding is that pretty quickly here now, we're going to see that new wrap. And it really is, it's a zinger. I like it a lot.
And Michael, have you, do you have numbers for the ridership numbers for Go Bus, just approximately? Has the ridership continued to be strong?
The ridership has continued to be strong. I do have to say Carolyn didn't get me exact numbers. It's busy in her world right now.
Michael, I was wondering if you could go back to the 2015 ridership. That's something we're always kind of interested in. Many people have said to me, "Well, where are those people on the buses? They look like they're empty," or whatever. And so, I like to see your totals here. And then, the fare box revenue was at a record. So, if you could talk a little bit about that, I think that would be good.
Well, not only was our fare box revenue at a record for January, but if you look at our ridership numbers for 2015, overall, we were down very slightly from last year, which was a record year in overall ridership. But in terms of our general public ridership, now, we operate service contracts. Our largest one is with Summit Coats Run Apartment Complex, very high-frequency, high-volume service. And that service declined slightly. But what we saw was that that decline was matched by growth, significant growth on the general public city side. So, this was actually the first year that we crossed the 100,000-ride mark for our general public service. And if you go back, when I started in 2012, for 2011, the previous year, that number had been 62,000. So, we've really increased quite a lot in the number of people in that group that are riding the city bus.
So, I would also add that we did the spur out to Chancy and the Plains and that area. And that seems to be, tell us about how that's operating.
So, that has been officially blessed by ODOT to continue as a regular part of our grant program. It was done with a special grant, the Job Access Reverse Food Grant. That was phased out. We did not have it renewed, but they matched the funding they would have provided through that grant in the regular program. And we just concluded a round of surveys, and we're finding that of the 11 and 1/2 thousand people that rode last year, this year, when we look at percentages, half or more than half of those are using the bus for job or school purposes, which was the intent of that grant.
I thought that was important to mention because there was some concern because it was going out in the county and the city is servicing this. And again, those jobs are in the city, and we're bringing these folks to work. So, I think that's an important point. And then, ODOT obviously saw the feasibility and the importance of it, and they've continued to.
They've given the support.
First, I would like to say yay for all the hard work you guys do. I also like to give a hats off to Paul Wild because so much of what has come to fruition was done under his leadership. And so many people, I remember the Go Bus, and everybody was saying, "Oh, that's maybe dead in the water." So, take big dreams and do them. And so, I think that this is great, and we're just having so much momentum to build on what you guys have been doing. And I think the Chancy extension is, you know, we're looking at. And I know that the mayor has been talking about the Nelsonville. And so, making it so, because this is, you know, being able to get people to jobs and schools, it's really important. So, thank you.
And medical health care. That's another component of all that. Athens is where the medical health care is located in the area.
Any other council questions or Michael or comments?
Thank you. I would just add my appreciation for the public transit in Athens and recognize how unique this system is in Appalachian Southeast Ohio. You know, we're really lucky to have this vibrant system, and it makes great contributions to our sustainability efforts as a community. Everybody on the bus means fewer people driving who may or may not have access to vehicles. So, I appreciate all the work you're doing.
Well, thank you. I definitely agree. And the work that we do is made possible in part by the support of all of you along this table. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Administration, any other comments?
Other than yay, keep doing what you're doing. And let's hook up with Nelsonville.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we do have a couple miscellaneous items. Okay, I'm going to need to pull up my information here. So, the Beyond the Bridges project. So, for folks, if you're unaware of it, it's Project 291. It is, we're calling it Between the Bridges, meaning the bridge on Richland between, that crosses the Hawking up to Oxbow, which everyone knows that we've completed here in the last couple of years. The project includes decorative lighting on Richland Avenue from South Schaefer to Oxbow, and the lighting will match what's already at the opposite ends. And the purpose of the project is to improve safety and aesthetics in the area. We are working with Ohio University on this project. They will be replacing the sidewalks from South Schaefer to Oxbow Bridge. If many of you have walked down there, you know those sidewalks are in need of repair. That will be done in conjunction with the lighting project. There is also some work that will be done likely out in the street to help with pedestrian issues. And that would include possibly some islands. And that would hopefully also help with Bobcat Lane and some of the issues with people making left turns where they shouldn't be, in and out of there, as well as just to improve the pedestrian, kind of funnel the pedestrians to the pedestrian crossing there on Richland Avenue. So, there's a huge safety component involved with this, thinking on this. And so, we want to move forward with that. The design of the project right now, we're estimating will cost $43,325. The money has already been encumbered, so it will be wrapped eventually into the authorization of the project when the ordinance is written. What else? That's pretty much it at this point. So, this has been on the discussion with the transportation now for several years. We've been discussing it. If you think about it, this is really going to improve that corridor as you come down Richland from the Uptown area. It's going to be a pretty aesthetic look from crossing the Oxbow down all the way to the roundabout with the same lighting. And then, the safety issues, we really know need to be improved. So, Administration, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad you mentioned the aesthetics. We have a lot of old Cobra lighting down through that area, and it's kind of Spartan in some places, too. So, a lot of corrective actions with that. OU wants the city to manage this project as it rolls forward. You know, they'll pay for what needs to be done. Going to pay for the sidewalks and the island, and then, we will cover the lighting that's going to go in down through that area. So, this is a needed project to move forward.
Well, and it became even more needed, I think, in terms of the safety issues as well with the lighting when we opened Bobcat Lane and all this stuff. And then, the enormous amount of traffic, foot traffic through that area and the crossing at different entrances on the street, which aren't really pedestrian crossings. So, there's different types of designs that are going to be looked at in the design and engineering in terms of how to handle all of that.
Yep. The island that you mentioned a minute ago there by Bobcat Lane will be significant, what ends up going in there. And again, it's, as I understand it, they're constantly citing individuals even during, all throughout the test period, they've been citing individuals. You know, through my lens, it's not so much a long-term behavioral change at this point in the game with what we're seeing down there, because, you know, a lot of those that are turning are, student bodies are constantly changing group, and it's a lot of students driving down there to drop off people and so and so forth. And it's not just students, it's, there's a lot of people that are doing it. So, this will be a good corrective action in that stretch, just from a safety standpoint.
Right. And the lighting, that'll help.
The lighting will be good.
Of note, because we want to do this just like everybody else, the very first week in May and be concluded by the time the students return, we would ask that this get rapid consideration.
So, we'll come forward with an ordinance? First Monday in March? Can move forward that. The split between OU and, I think that might be important to mention in terms of the cost, OU is paying for, the city's paying for the lights?
The lighting.
And then, the island? No, no island?
We're assigning the island to the university because of the roadway.
Okay. And then, also the sidewalks and curbing?
Right.
All right. Any questions?
I do, thank you. So, is, and excuse me, because of course, this is the first time I've really had a chance to kind of hear about this, but is the, will the speed limits, I mean, I assume that the island will probably do some traffic calming. Well, do you think that the overall limits might drop a little bit? Is that what we're trying to?
I think anytime you do traffic calming, you're looking for a drop in the speed, even though it's posted at a certain speed. I know many people do not travel at that speed. So, you, you know, that would be, I think, one idea whenever you're traffic calming, that you hope it reduces the speed. And then, the other issue there is you've got the heavy pedestrian traffic crossing, and you've got speed, and you've got people turning in where they shouldn't be turning in. So, there's a lot of safety issues that hopefully this will remedy.
Yes, yeah. I just, you know, and it's funny because I just actually had a conversation with the citizen last Tuesday, and they were, they were actually talking about that intersection and was wondering, could we have like a crosswalk or something? And it's not, but I just, I mean, I do feel like I should probably at least say that at this point, just because this is, there is some changing in there, but I think their worry and concern was more that they would have to come to a stop, and it took them a long time sometimes before they could get started again. I don't know if that's necessarily.
I know our city engineer, Andy Stone, has really looked at this area very closely over the last several years, and, you know, a lot of people have suggested lights and different things. And I think that'll be part of this design as well, but we're not looking at any type of traffic light there or full stop. And I don't think, I would be concerned with adding more pedestrian crossings in addition to the one. We all know how the traffic backs up at certain times on the hour. It'll back up all the way to the bridge or all the way to the light, depending on which direction you're going. So, I, he's really looked at this area pretty well. So, I hope that the citizens will understand that it's not anything that's been done without a lot of thought and planning. Mayor?
Something that is being explored by the city engineer is possibly raising the road deck up seven feet, six or seven feet up, and then tunneling underneath Richland Avenue. So, kind of having an underpass and kind of finding that happy median in terms of making a causeway that goes through and connects West Green with Baker Center, which, because that's where the bulk of that foot traffic is coming from back there. I think it's an interesting idea to do. It will certainly alter that streetscape along there if we do have to bump up the road. And it would be a gradual grade that comes up and then rides back down again on the other side as you get closer to the convo. You know, I'm all about having our city engineer explore different options like that. Because I've sat in my office when the two screeching wheels have occurred, one was serious and one was less serious, but still serious. So, it's an interesting dilemma down there in that section. But city engineer is looking into some options for corrective actions.
And in the campus master plan, they showed some at other universities where they have tunnels as possibilities to safely have pedestrians access across.
All right. Member Kostas, any sad answer here?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
All right. Any other members?
Briefly, I'll just acknowledge that having done a pedestrian count near there when we were looking at the sidewalk use and how many people are accessing sidewalks, and it's incredible how many students are coming through that space, that crosswalk as well as then leading into Baker Center. It's unbelievable at certain times of the day. And the traffic does get backed all the way up, sometimes the intersection on Rich.
Right, right.
All the way to Schaefer Street as well as up the bridge, the other direction, as you've known. So, whether it's a tunnel or a bridge over, I think some of those ideas definitely have some validity to them. Thank you.
Any other comments? Member Kaufner?
Thank you. I'd just like to ask what funds, the monies will be coming from for this project.
I don't think they've been identified yet, but I'm sure he's looking at his 220s streets and maybe another source as well to fund that. So, this will be sent to the auditor's office for vetting. But all street-related.
And we want to thank Ohio University because they're going to probably do the majority of the cost.
They actually delayed their sidewalk repairs a year because we couldn't do this last year, what we're trying to complete Richland South. So, and they view that as a safety concern, the conditions of the different sections that will have to be repaired in the sidewalk. And in preparation for a possible future tunnel, these lights will be something that can be disconnected and replaced, you know, right back in where they need to go if we ever get to that, so.
Speaking of the lighting, just to make sure for our environmental lighting people out there who have concerns, the lights that are currently at either end have been vetted and everyone approves of. So, I believe that we're just continuing with that same design.
It'll be the hooded lights.
Right. 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 Because I know whenever we put in lighting, there is a concern from the public about the view up in terms of light pollution. Okay. Any other questions? Um, okay. So the next thing is on bounty. We need to, later tonight, we need to amend to, they need an 8:00 AM closure in order to do the setup. So we'll amend that ordinance or ask for the amendment. I did on the other ordinances, I'm thinking of for the Cruisins and those kinds of things. We had asked about the 1:00. Remember on our most recent closure at Trick or Treat, we made it 2:00 because of the concern of businesses. Would that work? Because I believe the ordinance currently reads 1:00.
We can make it 2:00. We discussed that again at staff this meeting. They're going to use the same as they did for the other Cruisin last year, maybe, that has the signs on it. So even though the signs go up and then they're bagged so that everybody knows they have to be out by 4:00.
By 4:00. But you're going to start--
But you could, you could make it 2:00. I'm sorry I didn't catch that, but--
Okay. So, okay, when we get to that ordinance, we can, we can discuss that. All right. One other thing, Member Cochran has been a member of a regional transportation group called the Buckeye Hills Group, and she's unable to attend that any longer. That was a regional planning group. Maybe you could explain it a little bit more, Member Cochran. And she's unable to attend that, so we are going to need to, we usually had a council person attending that. We can talk about it a little bit more, but if you could share what that group was.
There are actually a number of people who've attended at various points from the city of Athens, including our city engineer, Andy Stone. The mayor previously attended those meetings, as well as Lance Rep sometimes, and perhaps others. I know the county planner attended and the county engineer at sometimes as well. So it's, it's a group that has several different committees. I served on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and, you know, it's a good way to stay in touch with what's going on at ODOT and some of the different information coming through folks who are actively engaged in transportation services. So I don't know that we have to have somebody there from council, but it's always helpful.
Currently now, who do we have attending that? That regional group meeting, do we know?
Andy had attended on a few times. I don't know that they convened, they had big news come out recently that they are deemed a full MPO or whatever it was, as opposed to, that was kind of just a, a little--
Planning group.
Yeah, planning group. So they've reached that designation, which should invigorate the endeavors, so we'll make sure that we have attendance and representation.
Okay. And if anyone on council is interested in doing that, I, I do not have the time to do, to attend that, but if someone else is interested, please let us know. All right. I think that's it for transportation. Thank you. We'll move on to city and safety services with Councilmember Butler serving as chair.
Thank you, President Nisley. Onto the exciting subject of sludge. So the last time this was addressed in an ordinance form was 1996. Then former council member Nancy Bane, Mayor Abel, and president of council at the time, Guy Phillips. So we're in the need to renew our contract because the previous provider has recently passed away. So the city service safety director is asking for us to request advertising bid for a new service provider to--
A service provider to do what?
To haul sludge to our city property in Canenville.
Hauling and spreading.
Thank you. In the past, we had authorized up to $215,000, and I'm not positive where we'll be at currently. Perhaps the city service safety director has some ideas or--
Is that per year?
I'm sorry?
$215,000 was what we had authorized in the past.
Is that per year?
Yes, Andy's estimated closer to about $150,000. And it really will be tasking the service to also assist in terms of, you know, identifying best practices, what improvements we'll need and, so.
Thank you. Yeah. Any questions?
I have one question with our new sewer treatment plant. Do we--
We still have--
Is it less sludge, more sludge?
Based on his report.
Yeah, it's, it's not so much more sludge, it's more condensed sludge.
I see.
With the new system, it's condensing it down. Also looking with, with the bids, they come in looking at different options, too, possibly belt press drying some of the sludge and, which makes it acceptable for sending to landfill as an option, you know. But currently, as everyone knows, or I hope you know, that our sludge doesn't go to landfill. It goes out and is being spread in the field in Canenville, which is an acceptable practice after it's gone through the wastewater treatment plant.
With a cover crop over it.
Pardon me?
Cover crop.
There's a cover crop.
Absolutely. Right, right. Not for human consumption.
Just that it's not sitting out there. Right.
Any other questions? Okay, super. Moving on to miscellaneous, we have a request from our police chief to work in collaboration with, again, another good town gown opportunity here for us to collaborate and sign up collectively together with Chief Powers from the university for a relatively new program. And I'll read a little bit off of an email here, but this is something that's part of the Ohio Collaborative. Is that for me?
No, it's Jeff.
It's Governor Kasich.
Bad, bad boy.
Is the pizza ready?
No.
Okay. Sorry. This is a opportunity for us to work with this Ohio Collaborative program, which was created by Governor Kasich, a task force which makes recommendations to law enforcement for best practices. And specifically paying for a service through LexiPol, which would provide online development, implementation, documentation, and training of policy for each department based on current federal and state case law, best practices, and risk management. Our staff would be provided access and training bulletins on a daily basis, which is entirely recorded in LexiPol's database. This then exceeds the expectations of the Ohio Collaborative, which has standards and documentation met by 2017. We're aiming for, price tag for this service is $9,328 annually, and if we sign up with the university, we receive a 10% discount for the first year. If we sign up within the first 30 days here, we get potentially another 10% discount for first two years. Ultimately, this helps protect the city from liability and provide our community a better quality of police service, specifically through, through police policy management and training. I spoke today with our city service safety director as well as chief, and it didn't take long for him to acknowledge what we all know, which makes headlines unfortunately in the news today, and that has been the challenges in various other communities with police practices. And so this is an attempt and an effort, again, to be proactive, implement best practices, increase our ability to better document, and prepare for the responsibilities of the position of law enforcement. I think it's a wise investment, listening to the chief advocate. Mayor?
Yeah, this is one of these, one of the programs where Chief Pyle is really excited about this because it also aids him in being able to, you know, with a click, a few keystrokes, pull up to see, make sure that everyone within the police department is being kept abreast of new changes, policies, and, which is, you know, better informing the force, but also giving him a tool to where he can track to see, has everybody gone through and read through the latest briefs when it comes to policy and standards as they're constantly evolving, everything from use of deadly force to whatever. So this is, this is a great program, you know, and chief is excited about this, but it's also timely. As you mentioned, there's 10% reduction in cost and possibly a 10% reduction in the course of two years, if I'm not mistaken, depending on how quickly this gets acted upon.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Reiser and Councilmember Pappy, I believe, have questions.
Concerning the best practices and policies, whose best practices and policies are incorporated in this? Is it the ones that we're generating ourselves, or is it from, based upon Ohio revised code or some other, I mean, what is the, the source of that? Because I can see someone's best practice someplace else may not work best here.
Sure. This is all, this is federal, state, local, no, it's, it's incorporating everything, but it's, this is a national, LexiPol's a national program out there.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if, if, if an officer, say, is looking at what is the best policy for X situation, and they call it up on their screen, are they seeing this is what the federal government recommends is the best policy, or is it the best policy that the city of Athens has determined on its own? Is that what they're going to see?
I would contend it's best, the best practice, you know, that is in place or to be in place nationally. The chief has gone through and, over the six years or what have you that he's been chief, revamped all his policies. It's time-consuming. It may not meet the, the most recent and up-to-date as under the Ohio Collaborative. That's mandated by March of 2017, I believe, that we're in compliance, so.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out then, how do we cut down on the, any potential confusion?
These, this, these would hold those policies. This program would have the update, and that's what they're, we're held to. We're held to anyway, under mandate, so.
So, so my question is more philosophical because I think there's a lot of communities out there that say, why do we have a community that's more militaristic in our police force than we know our community here is well-trained in mental health issues and, and intervention techniques and all of those kinds of things? So I think the question, I guess, when you brought up the question, the thing that I'm asking is, in terms of best practices, does that meet with, I think he's asking, the city of Athens' philosophy on how we police? You know, because I don't know if the federal and the state and, you know, if everybody's is in line with our, you know, belief here in the city of Athens.
Well, community policing, I believe, is what they're referencing.
Community policing.
Sure, sure. Well, you know, this I don't know about LexiPol, you know, how modifiable it is in terms of adding your own, you know, components into it, because, you know, the, the way policing is done here, it's in compliance with the national level of what is acceptable and what isn't acceptable, but there's also, I agree with you, because I've had many conversations with our police chief about the way things are conducted here in the city of Athens.
Right. You know, you don't want to confuse our officers either, you know, they go through a specific amount of training here. Not everybody does community policing, you know.
They all should be.
Well, I, I agree, but, you know, I'm just, I think that's just something that needs to be coordinated or--
There should not be confusion. It's actually to help eliminate any confusion and tracking, but we can take these questions back to the chief and ask him to, to respond in well in advance of your March 7 meeting, so.
President, President Nisley?
I would agree that I think a little bit of additional information might be helpful. I look at it as, this is policy kind of information, just like our human resources director relies on publications and software to keep us up to date on what are, what are minimum guidelines that we need to be following. So that's kind of the line that I saw it as, not necessarily preempting the kind of leadership, particular leadership style that our police chief might be practicing here. So, and I'll see them at odds necessarily, but I, I do think that a little bit of additional information would be helpful.
Sure. We can look into that.
Yeah, and I would concur. Although speaking with the chief today, one of the things he acknowledged was that we're ahead of the game in a lot of best practices, such as our hiring policies. But then this also helps assist in use of force policies and documentation policies and training policies. So there's room for improvement. He acknowledged that we're behind a little bit in some areas, but that we're ahead of the game in other areas, and that this then puts the patrol officers right there in, in the front seat of what's best practices and expecting more training from them. The founder, I guess, is a 33-year CHP veteran and an attorney, the gentleman who founded this LexiPol, and he's the leading risk management assessor and trainer in law enforcement circles around the nation. Currently teaches in all three professional advancement courses offered by the OACP and the CLEE. So I guess, again, this is a person that knows what they're doing and is advising law enforcement agencies all across the country. But hearing more information would definitely be helpful.
There's, can I follow up a little bit on what you were saying? Number Butler is, yeah, Gordon Graham, he's a 33-year California Highway Patrol officer, as well as an attorney, who's gone through and vetted a lot of this. And one of the claims with LexiPol is a drop of 48 to 50% in risk liability with having gone through this training, so. But we will certainly check into, like, the flexibility of incorporating our own practices. You know, it could be in the form of modules within LexiPol. I don't know, but we can find out.
And certainly, more education is always helpful, you know. There, there's no question about that in keeping our officers up to speed.
Thank you. I don't think I have anything else to add unless there's other questions. Just Councilmember McGee.
Chief Pyle, I'd just add that I'm quite concerned with insurance costs for the actions of police officers, but certainly that's one thing to be concerned about. But I'm also concerned about the fact that sometimes citizens feel that they're not being treated right. So I like the fact that there's a national policy. I like the fact that there's some sort of continued training on that, but again, I don't want to see it get in the way that it's only how do we cut costs and lower insurance rates rather than how do we deal with our citizens, which we have somewhat of a unique community here, and that does take some special effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Are you on to miscellaneous? Sorry.
Yeah, we can't, yes, definitely, there's, I was just--
Still there.
There was a question from a colleague up here as well for some miscellaneous, so, but either one.
I, since this is the last time the council was meeting and we are going into spring break, there are several things that are going to happen over spring break, so I would like to just take a moment to speak to those when it comes to our streets and infrastructure. In terms of streets, major brick repair is going to be taking place on South Court Street between Mulberry and President. There'll be, require closure of South Court. Also, street sweeping and, in high on-street parking areas with water, some key meter replacements are going to be taking place at the normal high pedestrian traffic locations, 9 West State Street, grinders on West Union. Another one, this, this is important, those are all important, but this one in particular, which we just learned about earlier today during staff, and that is that there's going to be a citywide assessment of any water leakage, and the way this takes place is by doing soundings-- by doing soundings at the fire hydrants. And the only time to do these is in, at O-Dark 30, so 2:00 a.m. there will be small Polaris four-wheelers going around, and there will be people jumping out with stethoscopes and listening to the fire hydrant, so please don't be alarmed if that is observed out in the neighborhoods. They will be doing it everywhere in order to detect any water leakage that we have throughout the city so that corrective action can be made. So that's just a forewarning to everyone, don't think that someone's trying to steal your fire hydrant. Sewer on Mill Street, storm sewer repairs between College and Kern, which is going to be a partial closure. So again, a lot going on during spring break and taking advantage of lower traffic, lower pedestrian activity to get some things done.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything else on miscellaneous, from you?
I do have one more, real quick. Okay, thank you. And that is, on, this is tomorrow, actually, yeah, tomorrow evening, February 23rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It's going to be a sewer main inspection. This is going to be on South Court Street. It'll be closed between Mulberry and President Street for that sewer main inspection. So apologies to all, but that is important stuff to get done.
Thank you. I believe Councilmember Pappy had a brief.
I just have, I don't know, this may not be, this is probably for a future discussion, but maybe administration can speak to this. So there's a lot of, I was interviewed before coming to council tonight about this issue of closing streets for fests. And I'm just wondering if there's a meeting, meetings occurring, or kind of what the discussion is regarding that? Because apparently there is this, something's being vetted out there in the, in, somebody's phone? Something is being vetted out there to close the streets in, you know, the public forum. So I just thought I, since I got interviewed tonight to discuss that, maybe we should have a brief discussion of that, since it does fall under services and safety and all those other things. And I don't know where administration, if there's been discussions or what's going on with that.
There have not. No one has come forth, at least to the mayor's office, with this proposal. I was meeting with Sam Flannery, I want to say, I have his name wrong, but he's a member of the Student Senate, and he, he was, he had brought up and broached Number Fest in particular. I haven't really gotten back with him, and he had some other requests, as it were, related to other city safety services. But I think we, you may understand, and if not, I would state that we are not in favor of surrendering our street for a party that's non-sanctioned. It's, Halloween is a different animal, it became an animal and became sanctioned back in the 80s, because of that, so. That's the first stab, and I believe my police chief would speak in the same, Mayor, any different?
I've, no, nothing different from what you just said. I've heard the same thing, and I, but I haven't seen anything materialize yet, so I don't know that there's a conversation to be had. I was also asked by a reporter what my thoughts were on such a street closing. We don't have street closings throughout the city, and we haven't. I'll tell you, my chief concern about anything along these lines is one of liability. You're closing down a street and allowing whatever to take place through an act of condoning what's going on within that, that area, so, but I haven't seen anything.
I know there was some discussion about another, another street that hasn't normally had fests, and I did contact a person that happened to be on my street about regarding that and considering the neighborhood and the safety issues and what that would entail, and just questioning that, you know, to that person. I didn't hear back, but I thought that was important to reach out and, when you're planning such an event.
Councilmember McGee.
I should point out, I've been contacted by students, and it's my understanding that there's a petition being circulated that has approximately 1,000 votes, or 1,000 signatures, which might translate into 1,000 votes someday, but 1,000 signatures of students who would like High Street closed off for the High Fest, and I believe Palmer Street closed off for the Palmer Fest. The petition that I saw, that they sent to me to see what my opinion on this was, dealt with safety issues, and I, I think most of the students believe, and rightly so from my point of view, that it's much safer to have that street closed off than to pretend that you're actually having a safety issue by having, allowing cars to go through those streets where they're incredibly crowded with students who are just stumbling into the sidewalk, I mean, from the sidewalks into the streets. It would be much safer for the city to close those streets off. My understanding is the petition is asking for certain times, too, specific times, and I believe it's from noon till 7 o'clock p.m. I have not seen the final draft yet. My understanding is they are prepared to present it to you and to the City Safety Director, and, and to several members of council and ask you to consider voting for that. As far as the city's understanding as to what a street closing is, it, I believe we have several ordinances that would close off Court Street, our primary street for certain party-like festivities that are scheduled to come on, and I have a question for, for those, whether alcohol is sold at any of those, or used at any of those festivities, such as the bricks. My understanding is people bring wine to those. So again, it's, it's a degree of how you want to allow your citizens to express their own enjoyment of their neighborhoods. I'm not one for the fests necessarily, and I really want to emphasize that, but I am one to see the students being treated fairly, and I'm also one for, if I see safety problems, I'm not going to disguise and sweep them under the rug saying that, oh, we should be able to keep the streets open so we're not liable, when it's much more dangerous to have it in the current situation, in my belief.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I hope the city will consider the petition.
Thank you. Councilmember Fall and Councilmember Cochran?
I think that my first initial reactions to this is Halloween has certain safety precautions that is, and they have, you know, planning done six out, you know, six months out in front, and they're coordinating with the police, and there's all this other things that go on to ensure safety. And my concern is that High Fest and Palmer Fest, and then will it be Mill Fest, that, you know, are they going to have safe, safety patrols, or they going, you know, these are the sort of things that need to be asked, the students need to ask themselves when they, when they talk about closing streets. And also, my huge concern is that all of a sudden, it gets blown out there that there's this big block party, and that it's going to turn into another big, you know, huge Halloween Fest in spring. And I also think that for many, many people, businesses and such, that every, you know, why is it High or Oak or Mill Iron, and then Mill, and then Palmer, and then all of a sudden we have six weeks of closing streets? Because who, why is it High, High Street? Why does it get to be doing it? And why does Palmer? I think the students need to ask these serious questions of themselves, and how they would contribute to self-policing, you know, fundraising, and Halloween does fundraising, they do certain things with the police, and there's, you know, certain costs covered. And, and it's not just a question of closing the streets, that costs money. So I think that the students, before just giving us a petition, it's very easy to sign a petition, they need to, the students who are leading this charge need to ask those serious questions of themselves, and come with those sort of, ready to, to have that sort of discussion.
Thank you.
I would just suggest that at this point, we've spent far too much time discussing something that was a miscellaneous item, and it's not on the agenda, so we should talk about it when it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having, having any other last comments on that, I'll move on to one last miscellaneous, which I might need a little guidance from Councilmember Kotsas about this. Wednesday, I believe, our planner and Councilmember Kotsas will be speaking at a movie regarding transportation, bikes, and?
Yes, it's the Office of, OU Office of Sustainability. It's part of their, they have a winter movie series, and this, this Wednesday from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Athena Cinema. It's Bikes Versus Cars.
Thank you.
Which is a documentary on how some cities are dealing with bikes and cars sharing those roadways.
Thank you.
And there will be, and the panel will be directly after, after the movie. And I think it's from 7:00 to 9:00 is when they're expecting. I can't remember, the movie's maybe about an, let's say, an hour twenty, an hour and a half, something like that.
Thank you.
Should be exciting.
Just wanted to offer a little friendly shout-out there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe that is all.
One more?
Oh, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I throw myself at the mercy of council. Real quick, this is, this is important, at the Hero's Breakfast, the Red Cross Hero's Breakfast tomorrow morning, Officer Rick Crosson is being honored, so I just wanted to share that with anyone and encourage everyone to come out and celebrate his years of awesome duty to the city of Athens, as well as the DARE program.
What time and where?
7:00.
7:00 a.m.?
A clock tomorrow morning. Right in early. Join us at the Community Center. There is a cost associated with it, $20, I believe, $20 a plate to come out. There's others being honored as well, but one of our cities, oh, being honored.
Thank you, Mayor. That is all, thank you.
All right, we're ready to move on to our special session, and we're doing this specifically tonight, the special session and the readings of these ordinances, as I believe the mayor has requested that we have an AEP agreement that does become effective on March 1, and so we need to move this ordinance on through tonight, and we will be reading our other ordinances that are under consideration as well. Our first item of business is to establish a quorum. All council members are here tonight, so we'll begin with ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 1316 is an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a salt truck, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to adopt 1316. Oh, it's tabled, I guess. All right, I mess that, sorry, we're tabling this.
And so we do need a motion and a second and a vote for the tabling.
I move to table ordinance 1316.
And for the purposes that we need additional information.
We do. We need, we need firm costs on this particular vehicle. Initially, it was anticipated $100,000, but engineer Andy Stone wants to dig deeper into this and make sure he has solid numbers, rather than have to come back and reappropriate.
So we have a motion and a second for tabling ordinance 1316. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion carries to table this particular ordinance for now. Ordinance 1516 is an ordinance amending ordinance of 116, storm water repair on North Court Street, project number 300, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nysley. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance O-15-16.
Second.
Thank you. As you recall, this particular ordinance is in reference to some work that our street, city service safety director, sorry, our street engineer, public works director, Andy Stone, determined is necessary after inspecting a storm tunnel, which appears to be in disrepair underneath Court Street, and this is $117,000 directed towards that from the Sewer Storm Water Fund, 755, Transition Class 500. Questions or comments?
We have a motion and a second, then, for approval of ordinance 1516. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 1616 is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title V, Public Utilities, Chapter 5.02, Garbage and Rubbish, Sections 5.02, 03D, Preparation and Storage, and Title 29, Housing Regulations, Chapter 29.12, Premises Conditions, and in Section 29.12.02, citations, and this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 1616.
Not only because it has one of the longest titles, this is basically amending the various
titles and codes to adopt an appeals process for the letter citation process.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 1616. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have a series of ordinances for second reading, so we'll be reading a lot of titles and numbers, unless I hear otherwise that something needs to be suspended for some reason or amended. Ordinance 1916 is an ordinance closing President Street and portions of Court and Union Streets on Saturday, April 16, 2016, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 2016 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Friday, June 3, and August 12, and a portion of Union Street on September 23, 2016, for a cruise inn, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Member, or President Nysley, this is the one that I need to question administration. It says 1:00 p.m. closure for the cruise inns. Should we change that to 2?
You may.
Okay, so I move to amend 2016. And the reason being, again, we're trying to give as much business time on Court Street as we possibly can in bagging those meters. Now, realizing, I don't know that we need to say this in here, realizing the cars won't be asked to leave the street till 4:00 p.m., but they begin to bag at 2:00, and there is a sign on the bag that says vehicles must be removed by 4:00. So I'd like to amend in Section 1B to 2:00 p.m.
Okay, we have an amendment, then, for ordinance 2016, changing the time from 1:00 to 2:00. And we have a motion and a second for that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The motion, or the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 2116 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington on Saturday, August 13, 2016, from noon to midnight for Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Member Nysley. I move to amend 2116. And the reason for the amendment is we need to move the time of closure to 8:00 a.m., where now it says 9:00 a.m. under Section A.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change Section 1, Part A, from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Ordinance 2216 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on August 13, 2016, during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 2416 is an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance and ordinance 7914 to increase the authorized expenditure for the Richland South Project, number 244, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Does this need to be, I move that we suspend 2416. Does this need to be, I move that we suspend 2416. Reason being, we need to move forward on paying the bills.
The last of the expenditures to complete the project, okay.
I'm writing the checks.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 2416. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Pappy.
Move to adopt 2416. For the reasons just previously discussed.
Motion to approve, a motion and second to approve ordinance 2416. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ordinance, the motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2516 is an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 2716 is an ordinance authorizing asbestos and lead abatement at the Armory, which is project number 297. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 2916 is an ordinance granting the renewal of a revocable license to Brad Jagaman, owner 15, 17, and 19 Bayard Street, to allow parking on the city right-of-way, introduced by Councilmember Fall. We now have ordinances for first reading. And the first one is ordinance 3016, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a master energy purchase agreement with AEP Energy and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend. Because the contract's supposed to be going on starting March 1. And that's quickly coming up.
This is a motion to suspend the rules for approval of ordinance 3016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Fall.
I move that we adopt 3016. And I invite the mayor to give a little background.
Sure. This is what is referred to as a blending of within SOPEC, but it's specific to county as well. County went through their channels. The city's now going through our channels to getting what's called, referred to as a new blended rate. So this will be a drop in the cost per kilowatt usage or hours for the city mercantile accounts, where we bundle together all 82 municipal buildings. It's high-energy consumers, to where it'll ultimately lead to a cost savings over the next 14 months of about $53,000, 52,000, 53,000, somewhere in that price range. The county's blend also saves them money for their 60-some county buildings, but all told, county and city, it'll be a savings of over $79,000.
Thank you.
And it is time-sensitive, so I'm glad you brought that up. It's kind of...
Mayor, is that part of our SOPEC agreement?
It is.
It is. I read something, and I'm not sure, maybe you can help with the accuracy on this. There was the solar array that was being bid on or being projected for the Albany area to help. I think it was a part of this whole plan. And is that still on board, or...
It's still being explored and still being looked at, because alternative energy, you know, within our region was part of the mix. At this point in time, one of the issues becomes, this is somewhat related, it's not related at all to this, to this piece of legislation. But the solar field is, at this point in time, leading to a higher price tag than was anticipated, not for the build, but for the renewable energy itself in terms of what it's going to cost. So that's being explored, and still negotiations going on.
And you sit on the SOPEC board as the mayor.
I do. On the, I sit on the board. There's five, or four of us.
So we now have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 3016. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Before we do this, you had another comment?
I just wanted to ask what our price per kilowatt-hour is before we vote on it.
You got it. Glad you asked. It is going from .0547 to .04917.
And that's for all our municipal buildings?
Correct.
Which will save a bunch of money.
Well, 53,000.
$53,000.
That's a lot of money.
Over 14 months, so that's significant savings for the city's buildings. And the city, again, you know, you think about the wastewater treatment plant, you think of the water treatment plant, they are, and the community center, they're our highest energy users, so this is going to be substantial savings, which goes back into...
Well, we'll take the vote now. That was important information, so thank you for asking it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3116 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $500,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of design engineering for swimming pool options and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. This is one of our preliminary steps, and something from the administration you're saying, want me?
We need to amend the title of this ordinance. It was supposed to have read, and I'll pick up, "Costs, costs of design, engineering, and construction for the swimming pool options."
So we need to insert the words "and" construction.
After the word "engineering."
After the word "design." They're both engineering.
Oh, and design.
I'm sorry. Engineering activities.
Engineering and design.
Correct.
Design and construction, engineering. Is that how they get it?
Okay, so you want "design," and then insert the word "construction?"
And "construction."
And "construction, engineering." That's where you want it inserted? Okay.
But that's not construction. It's looking, it's all, this is all design, looking at design and...
It's all engineering.
Right. So, but it's not like going out there and digging up stuff yet.
What we found with the wastewater treatment plan, and Andy spoke about that today, is, you know, with ODOT and federally-funded projects, you have to have a separate engineer who designs, then a separate one that oversees construction. In services like this, and that's the wastewater treatment plant, you want to retain the design engineer through construction, because they designed that design, and then they would be retained throughout. We feel that that more appropriately reflects the job. And frankly, we wouldn't pay $500,000 for just a design. We anticipate that being incorporated into construction engineering costs as well.
So we have...
Where are we?
And do we have a motion to amend then?
Well...
About what?
There's some other questions, because we just received this tonight, and I've been reading through it. So maybe there's another amendment? I don't know. So I was looking, okay, I'm going to have to find it again. Where it talks about the pool, and it reads differently than what it says at the top. So let me find it again, because I only received this right before council started. I don't know if everybody else can pull up there first. Maybe we can try to find it here.
And you're saying what you're looking for is something that's in the top, but is worded differently?
Something in one of the sections that seems to be worded differently in terms of the pool. It sounds more like, back to our earlier concerns about replacement pool.
And it would be better...
I think that language came from the bond, the actual levy language. Sorry, levy language.
Well, then that doesn't go with what, how the ordinance was amended.
We didn't have replacement in the levy language.
Yeah. Right. We just have pool. And then it was amended last week to options. So I'm just, it's in here somewhere.
Is it this, Michelle, where it says, quote, "Swimming Pool Improvements Bond Anticipation Notes"?
Anticipation notes, Section 4.
Is it that one?
Is that all it says?
It's in quotes right here.
Oh, you have a hard copy.
Is that the one you're wondering about?
It shall be designed "Swimming Pool Improvements Bond Anticipation Notes." I just want to make sure that that's going along with our...
With the title section?
Design and construction engineering for swimming pool options. And this says, the note shall be designated, quote-unquote, "Swimming Pool Improvements Bond Anticipation Notes," unquote, in Section 4. I just need to clarify, I just want to make sure that, because I think as you all are, I don't know if anybody else has questions as to the RFQ process. I understand it's administrative, and I just want to state, because there has been so much misunderstanding about this whole pool issue with the community and everything that we're all on board with how we move forward with this. And so when I saw that earlier, it just kind of jumped out at me. I'm not, it's confusing compared to design now amended and construction engineering for swimming pool options.
Well, we have a...
This was the bond language that came from Dennis Schwaly. Our law director, Lisa Eliason, looked through this as well.
This is since the amendment?
This was Friday afternoon at 3:00, to where we actually had Dennis Schwaly on the telephone and walked through this in terms of getting the language right and moving forward, so...
I can't say if the amendment works or not, because I did not get that fully vetted.
Wait a minute.
The amendment that were requested to include construction engineering, not just design engineering, so...
The one we just passed?
No, no. This one tonight.
Right here.
Yeah, I know, we had an amendment to the title. I understand that.
So...
I'm not quite sure I understand your last comment.
I believe perhaps we need to rest this until we get those answers to the questions.
Do you prefer to have a table? This is just first reading.
The mayor's exactly right. This came from the bond council. They actually draft that bond language.
It is a first reading, correct.
Yeah. And it's back to first reading.
Well, maybe what we need to do is to make sure that...
But it's been introduced. The president of council has introduced this, okay? I was speaking to it. We've taken questions, and we made amendments to it. So you can't say it doesn't exist. It has to be.
We didn't say that. We have not taken amendments to it. We have not taken...
But she's amended the title.
No, she only spoke to possibly amend it. We did not have a motion and a second to move forward with an amendment. I think we're okay, as Ms. Horanne Mosley is saying, that we're okay to move forward with clarifying now. We have just introduced, this won't slow us down in the process, but then if we do need to amend, we'll get both of these questions vetted now as we come back for second reading.
I think it's a question of making sure that the language is, you know, uniform through the, just making sure that there isn't cross...
I agree 100%. And I, you know, I, it warrants having clarification from Dennis Schwaly about that particular line that she brought up in Section 4, to make sure that everything is syncing up so that there's no whoopsies anywhere with the way this thing moves forward.
We have parallel, agree, language in agreement.
Easy to figure out.
That makes, thank you.
Yep, and then for the, just so the community understands that $500,000 is for construction engineering as well. I mean, it's, that seems like a lot to a lot of people for a designer, when we've already had, you know, 2006, something, and then most recently, 2014, 15, something, so, yeah. And I don't think the public necessarily understands an RFQ process and that you have to send something out there to engineers and give them an idea of what it is you want, so...
Absolutely. An RFQ is request for qualifications. So that's just sending it out there to see who are the qualified pool builders out there. And then, once that all comes in, that's a list, and then the RFP would follow after that in terms of request for proposals.
And that's what this $500,000 encompasses, all of that. Right.
The idea with an RFQ is to kind of get the shaft, the wheat, you know, kind of separated from the chaff. You don't want somebody bidding on an RFP who's not qualified to do pool design and engineering. I mean, I think that's important, because it's for safety and design considerations, and ultimately, it makes sense to do the due diligence upfront, then going back later and saying, whoa, this is a great design, but all you've built are skate parks, you know? And so...
Right. I mean, the state does have a program for pre-certification for certain projects, but I personally don't know if they have a specific section that is pre-certification for pool building.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we've read it for the first time, and we'll have clarifications by the time we come back for second reading then.
Till March 1st or whatever.
Yep. Seven. Ordinance 3216 is an ordinance amending ordinance 2616, authorizing a payment of a prior year expense and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I knew that we suspend the rules for 3216.
And the reason being that it's urgency and...
It is a prior, yes, it's a... Prior year bill, it needs to be paid.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, the suspend. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 3216.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 3216 to pay our prior year's expense. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 3316 is an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements on Central Avenue, North Congress Street, and South May, associated with project number 294, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. This is the beginning ordinance that will be read for three times. That puts the final assessment to the homeowners on those three properties for the sidewalks that were replaced this summer. Nobody has been billed at this point, and this is a very formal process, and so that's what this ordinance deals with in terms of assessing the homeowner.
And they have an appeals process.
That's already been completed. We've moved on from that. We've already run through all of that. So this is the final bill that will come from the city.
Thank you. Under other business now, we have a, we'll be having a motion to reappoint members to the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Advisory Board. That's what I have down for business. Do we have that information?
I actually need some assistance from the mayor's office, because I left those notes at my house. They're sitting on my kitchen table, so I'm not prepared at this moment to list the names of everyone that's up for reappointments.
It would be, there's three confirmed individuals, a slate of three, there is four that all come up. It will be reappointing Paige Allast. It'll also be reappointing Bill Walker, and finally, former mayor Rick Abel would like to be reappointed as well. James Patrick has opted not to continue on for a final term on the Arts, Parks, and Rec Advisory Board, so...
So there will be an opening?
There will be an opening. I am looking at individuals as we speak.
In terms of for...
Two years.
Is that correct?
It is two years, three, you can have three sequential, two-year terms, so six years total, similar to some of the others, just a different mix.
So I'd like to make a motion then to reappoint three individuals that have expressed interest in continuing to be part of, so that would be Mr. Walker, Mr. Abel, and Miss Allast.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second for the reappointment of these members to the Arts, Parks, and Recreation Advisory Board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, unanimous, and thank you for their service. They've done, they've put a lot of work in already over the past few years, and glad that they're willing to continue again. I think we're ready to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. A motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, I don't think. We'll adjourn at 8:30 p.m. Thank you.